All right, let's go. Good evening and welcome to the November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-four regular session of Finley City Council. We will start this evening's meeting with roll call. Then we will follow with Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
Mr. Baumann.
Here.
Mr. DeArment.
Here.
Ms. Frishy.
Here.
Mr. Greeno.
Here.
Mr. Hellman.
Here.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Here.
Mr. Palmer.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Warnicki.
Here.
And Mr. Wobser.
Present.
We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to accept the public hearing and the regular city council minutes. Mr. Palmer, seconded by Mr. DeArment. Questions or comments? All those in favor of acceptance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, they are accepted. Mr. Russell, do we have any add-ons, replacements, or removals from tonight's agenda?
We have a plethora. Two add-ons. Actually, this would be a... It's listed as an add-on, but it's a list of names for Race Track Incorporated's liquor permit fixing spellings and adding additional people who were not on the original liquor permit. And also a letter from Engineer Calb concerning the airport's snow removal equipment building. And also a replacement for ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one-two-two as amended that will reflect the changes as requested in Engineer Calb's letter about the airport's snow removal equipment. I move that the two letters be added and the ordinance be replaced.
Second, Mr. Hellman, discussion. All those in favor of the changes as described, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, they are accepted. We do have one petition tonight.
A petition for annexation for two parcels filed by Agent for the petitioner Phil Rooney for parcel A, which is parcel number three-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-eight-zero-zero-five-two, which totals five point one-two acres, and parcel B for different areas, three-three-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-eight-one-six-three, and three-three-zero-zero-zero-one-zero-zero-two-four-two-five totaling thirteen point zero-five-five acres to be annexed in from Marion Township.
Questions or comments? A resolution has been created for that. We have no oral communications this evening. Written communications, we have none, and we have no contractors or utility communications this evening. So we will move on to reports of municipal officers and departments.
City income tax monthly collections report for October twenty twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
Finley Municipal Court activities report for October twenty twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
Finley Police Departmental Activities Report for October twenty twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
City income...or excuse me, City Planning Commission Agenda for November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, as well as a staff report of November fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the minutes of October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Agenda, report, and minutes to be filed.
Treasurers reconciliation report as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
Summary financial reports for October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Report to be filed.
Officer shareholders disclosure form from the Ohio Department of Commerce Division of Liquor Control for Race Track Incorporated located at one-one-five-zero-zero, County Road ninety-nine for a C-one liquor permit. A check of the record showed no criminal record.
Mr. Palmer.
Move that no objection be filed.
As amended, please. There was a little bit of amended, thank you. Second, Mr. Niemeyer, discussion. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, no objection will be filed.
There were two for Race Track. This one is for a Trek C-one and C-two liquor permit, also located at one-one-five-zero-zero, County Road ninety-nine, and no criminal record for the...those that applied.
Mr. Palmer.
Move that no objection be filed.
As amended, please.
As amended.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Baumann, discussion. All those in favor that no objection be filed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay, no objection will be filed.
Immigration Task Force Meeting Minutes for October ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Minutes to be filed.
Airport Advisory Board Minutes for June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments, Mr. Russell?
Yes, I had asked Rob when I saw this airport advisory minutes. There's includes in the section requesting an ordinance change to chapter one forty-nine point two of our city ordinances. And Rob, so my question really is, does us passing or accepting the board minutes, do you recommend...is that enough to get that request for legislation moving? Or would you recommend that we specifically have two council reps request that legislation?
You talked about this, I would recommend it be questioned.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Baumann.
I would request that legislation be created.
Second, Mr. Russell. All those in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, we don't have to vote. It's just that two have done that, it will be done, thank you.
Board of Zoning Appeals Minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Questions or comments? Minutes to be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding shade tree appointments, does not require council's confirmation.
Mayor Mern.
I just wanted to make a quick note. Kept this letter brief, but the three individuals that are adding, I'm excited to have joined, they had all expressed interest. And when we put out a call for interested parties, and their backgrounds include kind of historical preservation, another is an urban planner, and another is a landscape architect. So I think that they'll bring a really good background to be able to continue to have a robust shade tree.
Letter be filed.
Letter from Income Tax Administrator Price regarding refund request.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding homeless camps.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed.
Letter from Service Safety Director Martin regarding insurance payment for repairs of a police department vehicle from an accident.
Letter be filed.
Letter from Police Captain Hendren regarding Ohio Traffic Safety Office IDEP Grant.
Mr. Russell.
Not really a question about it, just that I know that of the South Main Street residents and neighbors who have been seeing increased speeding of ridiculous proportions, they'll love seeing, knowing that we're going to have increased traffic, high visibility enforcement. And I think they would all hope that a lot of it happens on South Main Street. So happy to see this here.
Mayor.
I would just add, this is something that is actually annually available, and the city had not taken advantage of it in the past. We're a qualifying city, and so we were able to automatically receive this just by applying and stating we were interested. One thing that I wanted to point out is that Service Safety Director Martin and myself have really been pushing chief, and I know he is fully supportive of continuing throughout the community to try to get folks, one, to slow down, making sure people are, you know, following the rules of the land. And so that we...hopefully you have noticed it throughout the community. We've been especially focused on kind of some of those four-lane roads where people tend to speed most frequently, and our ticketing folks, both for that as well as for noise. So hopefully, we're going to continue to push that and make sure that we're aligning ourselves with, one, keeping people accountable, but, two, also that preservation of neighborhoods, which is something that we continue to push.
Mr. Russell.
I did notice in the police stats that it was the highest month for citations and just off the highest month for traffic stops. Question for Robert, the mayor, how does high-visibility enforcement differ from the type of enforcement that Finley PD normally does for traffic?
So, if I may, these grants actually have specific criteria, and it's actually covering the overtime over both. There's two of them, one over three hundred and twenty hours and one three hundred and ten hours. There are certain days like prom, holidays, other criteria that these days have to hit, but there's also the discretionary ability to do it on other days. So this is high-visibility enforcement, and it's covering that overtime to get the manpower to do it.
Mr. Russell.
Could one or two of those days be cruise night?
That's our discretion to do, yes.
Just real quick, what's the IDEP stand for?
It is Impaired Driving Enforcement Program is IDEP, and then the STEP program is Selective Traffic Enforcement Program.
Thank you. Letter be filed.
A letter from Police Captain Hendren regarding Ohio Traffic Safety Office STEP Grant.
Letter be filed.
Letter from Mayor Mern regarding flood mitigation.
Questions or comments? Letter be filed. Oh, Mr. Stachak.
I'm going to take this opportunity to again advocate that council, on their behalf, hire a fiduciary to advise us on environmental issues. I want to remind you of the headline back in May of earlier this year where it said arsenic was found in the soil, and in a test afterwards, it was either removed or buried by benching, they don't know what happened to it. And you'll note in the detailed letter from the mayor that we're looking for a million dollars of a brownfield grant. My point is not that it's not going to get done. My point is the city needs a fiduciary to advise you because there is no one in the city who is elected or appointed or part of this body that has the qualifications or the expertise that we need to make sure that our interests are being protected as these projects move forward. And as your fiscal officer, I believe we're to the point where it would be irresponsible to turn another shovel of dirt without a consultant that works at our behest and that we can call on on a regular basis.
Mayor.
Yep, I completely agree, and we will proceed with doing that. As a reminder, I've been waiting to do that because we need to look... We're working through with the county and the Conservancy District all of the different MOUs and all of those different documents, and rather than having four different documents saying who's responsible for each individual parcel and environmental review, we are working to have one comprehensive document that will cover all of the properties, how that will be handled, and the oversight process. So that is something that is still on my radar, and we're still working through, and we'll have documentation for council to review in the near future.
Mr. Hellman.
This is for the mayor, I think, or the auditor. Is there another step after this one? It seems like we take one step forward, and then there's, oh, we got one more thing to do. You know, we get an environmental engineer, and then we get somebody in there with a digger, and you know, we go on and on, now we need a fiduciary. Is there something else beyond this?
Mayor.
So there's still plenty of steps that are going to occur throughout this process. This is a huge project with lots of different layers, lots of different property owners. I think we are nearing the end. I think, you know, as we've been working through this process, obviously, we... With the recreational components, we hired an outside consultant to do additional testing. We got the phase ones, we got the phase twos. With the NEPA review as part of the federal grant, we'll have additional review. What the auditor is requesting will also have to occur before the projects move forward, just as we are going to need to see the full construction documents and bid documents before the county and Conservancy District put the bid documents out so that we make sure that they meet what we need in the long term, just as we have the property transfer agreement. So there are a lot of different components. I think we are making a lot of headway. And I think once we get the MOU executed, these additional appropriations put aside, then the next step is moving forward with getting the environmental fiduciary for oversight of those projects outlined in the bid construction documents that we will have from the Conservancy District and the county.
Mr. Stachak.
Appreciate that question. It was easy to redevelop grounds such as this. It'd probably be done, and there wouldn't be any to do. But I have a different point. I have a request from the law director that we either add the fiscal officer's certificate to this MOU, or that I get a legal opinion as to why it wouldn't be required for my file. But I think when we're talking about a financial agreement here, which this is essentially a contract, there should be a fiscal officer's certificate where I sign off as well. Either will do with the proper wording from the director of law.
Letter to be filed.
A letter from City Engineer Calb regarding sixth capital improvement appropriation of twenty twenty-four.
Letter be filed. Committee reports. I'm sorry, we've got a couple.
Add-on letter from City Engineer Calb regarding airport snow removal equipment building, project number three-five-two-three-two-three-zero-zero. This is an amendment.
Letter...oh, Mr. Russell.
This was briefly brought up in the Strategic Planning Committee. Jeremy, do you want to run through the logic or the reasoning behind this?
Yeah, so originally what we were doing was appropriating four hundred seventy-five thousand of capital funds. With that, we still have a demolition program that had two hundred thousand funds of ARPA funds within that that was still needing to be available. With ongoing discussion with that, we wanted to ensure that the two hundred thousand of ARPA funds is going to be fully committed prior to the end of the year. This project was slated, it's ready to go, it's just pretty much appropriating the funds for it. So to ensure that we can appropriate or commit those ARPA funds fully prior to the end of the year, what we are allocated, and it fits within the guidelines of everything is needed within that, we've been working with the auditor's office to ensure that that all is a smooth transition within it. So just to kind of make sure we're good with everything, I wanted to use those ARPA funds from the demolition program for the airport building. But we'll keep the demolition program open, so that way the two hundred thousand dollars that was not used as part of the airport, we could utilize over there, which would give us greater flexibility on the demolition side. So just wanted to move around, make sure that we have everything set going forward.
Ms. Frishy.
And Jeremy, wasn't there a second part to that discussion that we were going to move those two hundred thousand dollars over onto Tiffin Avenue? Isn't that what you were talking...go ahead, Mayor.
That does free up two hundred thousand dollars in funds that we will use towards infrastructure improvements near the mall site. It'll be for water sewer line reconfiguration, removing that entrance further east at the city's request. That obviously adds some cost to that project. And so we will be able, requesting in separate legislation, to look at putting two hundred thousand dollars of capital funds towards that project.
Ms. Frishy.
And that will allow the project to move forward at the mall? Or that project at the mall would be at a standstill if we didn't do that?
I believe the project is continuing to move forward, but it's our infrastructure that they are reconfiguring at our request. And so I think it would be appropriate for us to help support those costs.
Thank you.
Letter to be filed. Committee reports.
The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom is referred a request from Timothy Bechtel on behalf of Hancock County Commissioners to vacate the east-west alley between lots forty-five to forty-eight and forty-nine to fifty-two in the Finley addition, the South Cory Street and the North Alley. We recommend to table.
Mr. Russell.
Move for acceptance of the committee report.
Second, Mr. Hellman, questions? All those in favor of the committee report, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Committee report is adopted.
The Planning and Zoning Committee, to whom is referred a request to continue September twelfth, twenty twenty-four, and October tenth, twenty twenty-four discussions on cannabis dispensary zoning. We recommend the establishment of a cannabis overlay district including C-two properties in the following areas: Tiffin Avenue, I-75, West Main Cross Street, Trenton Avenue west of I-75, I-75, County Road ninety-nine, exit one-sixty-one.
Mr. Baumann.
Move for adoption of the committee report.
Second, Mr. DeArment, questions or comments? Ms. Warnicki.
Can you...sorry. Can you state on here what area of Tiffin Avenue this is?
It's pretty much all C-two properties on Tiffin Avenue that is... I'd say it's east of Bright Road. It actually might be east of the Toyota dealership. It's a plaza.
No, Bright Road's where Speedway is.
So it might be east of Plaza or east of Bright Road. I think it's...but the concept...it's just a C-two dot...the C-two in that area.
Well, the reason I ask was that the ones on Trenton Avenue are specifically west of I-75, so I was curious where the ones were on Tiffin Avenue specifically.
The ones west...the Trenton Avenue, the removal of the properties east of I-75 was because specifically Mr. DeArment, and supported by the rest of the committee, didn't think it was a good idea to have the facilities that close to the high school.
Mr. Wobser.
I had two questions. The...does this distinguish between a dispensary and a grow house facility?
Mr. Baumann.
I was going to say, I think in this particular instance, we are talking about dispensaries only.
Dispensary only?
Yeah.
And would a grow facility be a separate...I don't know, can't imagine somebody putting that in the middle of the city, but never say never.
Industrial zoning?
Okay. And then my second question is, what are the next steps after this?
Hancock Regional Planning is going to refine the map. So an overlay district there, in essence, identifying by parcel number the specific parcels that are in the overlay district. And so they are going to reexamine these four areas and identify specifically the parcels that are in, ensuring that they're C... For example, that they're Zone C-two, and that they're in these areas. And then they're going to come back with that specific map along with legislation, I think, for our December meeting. And we would expect to see legislation potentially at the last meeting in December or first meeting in January.
Mayor.
And just to clarify, that legislation goes through review at City Planning Commission and back to Planning and Zoning before it then comes back to the full body.
Ms. Frishy.
Is there not, like, rules already in place about distance from schools, churches, whatever? And would we be infringing on that close to the high school in particular?
Mr. Russell.
The Ohio Revised Code specifies a buffer area around schools, churches, parks, kindergarten, or daycare facilities. There, I might have missed one, and churches. And I think it's a five-hundred-foot buffer. And the five-hundred-foot buffer on...from the high school reached to about, like, McDonald's maybe, maybe a little bit farther. So it didn't take the areas really to the east of, you know, the five-hundred... East of, let's say, McDonald's on Trenton Avenue. And that's why the overlay district, once again, the recommendation is to do it on the west side of I-75 only.
Ms. Warnicki.
And also, is it going to be part of this ordinance at some point, how many of these there can be?
Currently, the...I think we've...the state of Ohio has licensed us for two, and the committee has discussed a limit of two, and also potentially limiting them to one per of these areas, so you couldn't put both of them in one of the specific areas.
I just didn't see that written up, I was curious about that.
And that would be looked at in the final legislation before we would...that we would see... That we would then recommend to full council.
All right, thanks.
Ms. Frishy.
Have you gotten input from the high school? Did they have any concerns or input regarding Trenton Avenue at all, even on the west side?
Mr. Niemeyer.
I think, referring back to what Grant was saying, we have a buffer zone of maybe a thousand feet as opposed to what the state regulates. We could go to a thousand feet, fifteen hundred. That's still yet to be determined, right, Grant?
I kind of think that the... I kind of think that we moved away from the...doing the buffer zone area. But yeah, that could be in consideration. And on Ms. Frishy's question, we received no comment from Finley City Schools or any other organization.
Letter be filed. Oh, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Committee. All those in favor of the committee report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Committee report is adopted. I'm sorry. Legislation, we'll start with resolutions.
First reading for Resolution thirty-five, twenty twenty-four. A resolution stating what services the City of Finley, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Finley, Ohio, situated in Marion Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the southeast quarter of Section Thirty, Township One North, Range Eleven East, a tract of land consisting of five point one-two-five acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Barfell Hobart Avenue Annexation. First reading for Resolution thirty-six, twenty twenty-four. A resolution stating what services the City of Finley, Ohio will provide to the territory proposed to be annexed to the City of Finley, Ohio, situated in Marion Township, County of Hancock, State of Ohio, and being a part of the Buckeye addition and a part of the southeast quarter of Section Thirty, Township One North, Range Eleven East, Marion Township, a tract of land consisting of thirteen point zero-three-five acres of land, more or less, here and after referred to as the Barfell Hobart Avenue Annexation.
Ms. Frishy, you have a question?
Yeah, those two...where is that exactly? I'm not familiar.
Rob?
It's just south of Emory Adams Park, and it's a wooded area just south of there. General area for you.
Ordinances.
Third reading for ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one-twenty-two as amended, and ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declared in emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
Move to adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash one-twenty-two as amended?
Second, Mr. Russell. Just a second, my...Denise asked me if that had been amended yet.
It was amended by accepting the add-ons and replacements.
I'm sorry.
Answering her question. All right, we have first and second discussion. Hearing done, all those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
And Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Ordinances adopted.
Second reading for ordinance two thousand twenty-four dash one hundred twenty-four. An ordinance amending chapter eleven hundred et sec of the codified ordinances of the City of Finley, Ohio, known as a zoning code by rezoning the following described property referred to as Zero Glessner Avenue Rezone, referred to as Zero Glessner Avenue Rezone, parcel number five-zero-six, six-zero-zero-zero, one-zero-zero, eight-four-eight-four, which previously was zoned I-one light industrial to C-D condominium. Second reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred twenty-five. An ordinance amending Chapter eleven-hundred et sec of the codified ordinances of the City of Findlay, Ohio, known as the zoning code by rezoning the following described property, referred to as seventeen-hundred Western Avenue Rezone, which previously was zoned I-one light industrial to C-two general commercial. Second reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred twenty-six. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency. Second reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred twenty-nine. An ordinance appropriating and transferring funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Russell.
I, I know I expressed or asked some, or this actually got a little bit of discussion at our last meeting, and I had requested that Airport Manager Amanda McGee come and join us today to field questions. And then she's a little go-getter, so she calls me up on Wednesday and says, come out to the airport and see it for yourself. And I appreciate that offer. I did take, take a look, and she answered a lot of questions, but, so I have the, I have this thing in my head, but I know Amanda's here. If, if people have questions, I'd, you know, ask Amanda while she's available. And I think Jeremy, you had also asked that this get a third, suspend and third reading tonight, is that correct?
Correct.
And reason for, we're ready to go, or?
Well, yeah, and with that, the part of the wall that's gonna be, the, the block wall that's gonna be repaired is part of the hangar doors too, so it kinda coincides with each, each other where we wanna get that block wall fixed, so we can get the doors fixed as well.
Ms. Frishy.
I thought we had, the, the questions that were out there were more regards to what the lease agreement's gonna look like with the doctor's office and, and so forth. And is it necessary to have that in there, isn't it? Is it a big benefit? Are we gonna get rich? I guess those are the kinda things, I mean, I kinda looked some stuff up and, you know, pilots go and get their physicals anywhere, and sometimes they do go to an airport. So I don't know if you can fill in some of that detail.
Great question, and thank you guys so much for having me here, so I can answer these questions. There's only two things I like talking about that are more important than the airport, and those are my husband and my son. But, the doctor, I didn't prepare the Services and Safety Director, nor Jeremy, with the information that they needed at the last council meeting. That doctor has been working out of that office space for two months, actually. We do have a signed lease agreement with him for that space. So, just to be absolutely transparent, I didn't prepare the team with that information when they came to you the last time, at the last council meeting.
So what do we talk, and give a little highlight of this lease?
Gotcha. It's just a lease for this square footage. The FAA has come down to look, view that space and has deemed it worthy for that doctor to give exams out of. He is a certified aviation medical examiner. And he doesn't have any space in Blanchard Valley Hospital or anywhere else that he can do this, perform the service out of. So the airport had this empty space that needed a little zhuzh-ing up. So we did that, and now it brings pilots to the area. They can't fly here necessarily to get that exam done, but they can return here in their aircraft with, with, and buy fuel from us. But, that's all, that's it in a nutshell.
Long-term lease, money, what are we?
Oh, it's just a year, it's a standard lease that we use at the airport. It's just for a year, and then it goes month to month.
And how much?
Oh, it's thirty-two, thirty-two cent per square foot roughly.
Thirty-two what?
Thirty-two cents. And so it comes out to about two-hundred dollars a month only.
And, are there any other benefits to having a, I'll call it a doctor facility, would that allow us to do anything else at our airport down the road to increase? Internet, we had talked several years ago before you came on, international customs coming in and things like that potentially. Would that help us, or, is it, what, where is it helping us?
It wouldn't help with international customs or anything, but it can help those pilots that are already here. And I actually did some more research since the last council meeting about the nearest aviation medical examiner's office, 'cause the FAA made it seem like this was such a need, and it is. The closest one is in Michigan, it's fifty-one miles away. So.
Mr. Wobser. The thirty-two cents a square foot, is that the going rate for airport doctor offices? It seems relatively, uh, yeah, I was gonna say, seems rather a, a good lease fee.
I appreciate the question. And one thing I really strive to do is be fair and consistent. Those are two values I hold highly. And so we do rent that space on the airport based on the amenities offered in that space. And thirty-two cents per square foot is actually a little bit above what we normally charge for hangar spaces and other spaces with the more amenities. So, we did do market research and looked at other medical offices, if you will, or office spaces in general, and see how much those were going for at airports specifically. And we found our rates to be comparable.
So the, of the forty thousand that the ask is for, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
I think thirty thousand of it was to fix the door, is that correct, Jeremy? Or thereabouts?
No, so we got the block wall. With that, we're gonna have upgrading the HVAC system with that, so kinda like having a mini-split within there. So that way, that's, 'cause this hasn't been used. Last time it was used, it was in two thousand eight, when the last time when ProMedico was in there. And then also repairs the floor and then replacing that floor area of the office. So within that, you might, Amanda might be able to tell you with that, but a large portion of that is gonna be within the, repairing that block wall, 'cause that is ultimately adjacent to kind of the rest of our door hangers.
Yeah, we got caught up focusing on the doctor, 'cause that's fun and exciting. But it's really, that cinder block wall that the office space and that hangar is married to, are, that's really the costly portion of this. And we want to get the doctor a mini-split in there, because right now he's sharing utilities with the argument of hangar A-one, and that's not fair.
Thank you, Amanda.
Mayor.
Amanda, can you just provide a little more context of, and I know you could talk for hours about it. Give me like thirty-thousand-foot view literally of airport operations, 'cause obviously the, the revenue generation is not really from the hangar space. And so I don't want people to be like, oh, you guys are mismanaging the airport, 'cause you're not charging enough for the hangers. So can you talk a little bit about the, the business operations side?
I can, thank you. It's not, we're not making money off of hangers or lease agreements. Everyone knows that. Our money, it comes from the sale of fuel. That is where we generate a lot of money. We, we're really good at it. You can see our numbers this year, we're really good at it, 'cause we have a great team out there. But having more services available to offer pilots is gonna make this space so much more attractive, not just for hobby travelers, but for business travelers and cargo operations. It's gonna make this space lots more attractive for those operations specifically.
Okay, alright.
Are you allowed to tell us if it's, are we at least supporting a local doctor, or is this somebody that's flying in?
I can tell you all the things, Ms. Frishy. Yes, ma'am, he is a local doctor, actually, yes, ma'am. And his wife is the nurse that does the intaking.
Mr. DeArment.
So, when I was reading through the document, it talked like you had twenty customers lined up for hangar space. And I was thinking, wow, if you have that kinda demand, we should put in more hangers, right? But at thirty-two cents a square foot, I don't know how that's ever gonna pencil out. I mean, I mean, I'm looking at, you know, if you take two-hundred bucks a month into your forty grand, it's a two-hundred, it's, it's way out there. It's two-hundred months' return on.
It's the bigger picture, Mr. DeArment.
Yeah. I guess I'm missing the big picture, but.
Maybe I'm, I'm not articulating well, and I do apologize for that. But it brings more customers flying, more of the flying public to this airport. And I actually did some more research for a different project. But since we're getting into it, your airport here in Findlay, ODOT Aviation Division did a study in twenty-fourteen that did economic impact of airports in Ohio to their economies. This airport was garnering nineteen million dollars in economic impact, according to that study. So, forty thousand dollars could help.
Mr. Station.
Hey, just to share for historic perspective on that, we did at one time have a local developer who's very well-known, very well-heeled, look at building even condo hangers out there, and, and the numbers just didn't work.
Yeah, and done surprisingly.
So, just be aware that it's looked at regularly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're not.
Actually, I was kinda thinking about that, Jim. That, that would make sense to do, use somebody else's capital, but, alright, thank you.
That's a plight of most public-use airports in Ohio. I think Ohio has a hundred and four of them. We all have the same problem.
Sure.
No hangar space.
Mr. Russell.
Move that council statutory rules be suspended, and this ordinance be given its third reading.
Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
And Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second, or third reading.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred twenty-nine.
Mr. Hellman.
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Baumann. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
And Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ordinances adopted.
Second reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Findlay, Ohio to extend its financial commitment to the Blanchard River Watershed Partnership of five thousand dollars per year for calendar years twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-six, and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-one. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Findlay, Ohio to enter into a three-year contract with the International Association of Firefighters, Local Three-eight-one AFL-CIO, effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and declaring an emergency. I believe that's the second reading, not first. Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry. Second reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Findlay, Ohio to enter into three-year contracts with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association on behalf of the Divisions of Dispatch, Patrol Officers, Sergeants, and Lieutenants in the Findlay, Ohio Police Department, effective January first, twenty-twenty-five, and expiring December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven, and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-three. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-four. An ordinance establishing job classifications, pay ranges, salary schedules, and other matters that may affect pay for all non-elected officers and employees of the City of Findlay, Ohio, and repealing ordinance twenty-twenty-three ninety-seven as amended. Ordinance twenty-twenty-three one hundred twenty-four. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash twenty-four, and all other ordinances and or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-five. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Palmer.
This is just moving insurance money that, from, for repair for a police cruiser, I recommend. I, I move that council statutory rules be suspended, and this ordinance be given its second and third reading.
Second, Mr. DeArment. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
And Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and the clerk will give this ordinance its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-five. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-five.
Mr. Palmer.
Move for adoption of ordinance number twenty-twenty-four dash one thirty-five.
Second, Mr. Greeno, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
And Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Ordinances adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-six. An ordinance appropriating funds and declaring an emergency.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Russell.
As this is receiving grant money, move that council statutory rules be suspended, and ordinance twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four dash one thirty-six be given its second and third reading.
Second, Ms. Warnicki. All those in favor of the suspension of the rules, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
And Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
Rules of council have been suspended, and this ordinance will be given its second and third reading.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-six. Ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-six.
Mr. Russell.
Move for adoption of ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one thirty-six.
Second, Mr. Wobser, discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the ordinance, say aye after your name is called, those opposed, nay.
Mr. Palmer.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye.
Ms. Warnicki.
Aye.
Mr. Wobser.
Aye.
Mr. Baumann.
Aye.
Mr. DeArment.
Aye.
Ms. Frishy.
Aye.
Mr. Greeno.
Aye.
Mr. Hellman.
Aye.
And Mr. Niemeyer.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted.
First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-seven. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure and improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local School District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Higher Revised Code Sections Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-B, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-two, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-three, Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-three-two, and Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-five, hereinafter referred to as the TIF. Bear with me. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-eight. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels which, for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local Schools District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Higher Revised Code Sections Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-B, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-two, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-three, Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-three-two, and Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-five, hereinafter referred to as the Findlay Machine and Tool TIF.
Let her take a breath.
First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred thirty-nine. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local Schools District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Higher Revised Code Sections Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-B, Fifty-nine oh seven point forty-two, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-three, Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-three-two, and Fifty-seven oh nine point eight-five, hereinafter referred to as the ninety-nine seventy-five TIF. First reading for ordinance twenty-twenty-four dash one hundred forty. Declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the City of Findlay, Ohio, Hancock, City of Findlay, Hancock County, Ohio, to be a public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating specific public infrastructure improvements that, once made, will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments and lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing payments to the Van Buren Local Schools District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to Higher Revised Code Sections Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-B, Fifty-seven oh nine point forty-two, payments to the Van Buren Local Schools District, and providing related authorizations pursuant to higher revised code sections fifty-seven oh nine point forty-B, fifty-seven oh nine point forty-two, fifty-seven oh nine point forty-three, fifty-seven oh nine point eight-three-two, and fifty-seven oh nine point eight-five, hereinafter referred to as the Downtown North River TIF.
Ms. Warnicki.
When we talked about this, when we talked about this at the strategic planning meeting the time before last, this one doesn't have anything to do with Van Buren School District, does it?
That's what I was gonna say. I apologize. Nope, there's just a typo. It should be Findlay City School District, and that's my fault.
So, we'll get it amended for the next meeting.
We'll amend that. Well, I'm sorry, we'll amend that for the next meeting.
First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one hundred and forty-one. An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Findlay, Ohio, to enter into a memorandum agreement with the Hancock County Commissioners, as well as the Miami, Miami, Ma-Mee Watershed Conservancy District for continued flood mitigation improvements in and near the city of Findlay, appropriating funds thereto, and declared an emergency. First reading for ordinance twenty twenty-four dash one hundred and forty-two. An ordinance authorizing the mayor, service safety director, and/or city engineer of the city of Findlay, Ohio, to advertise for bids where required and enter into a contract for construction of various projects in accordance with the twenty twenty-four department equipment list, appropriating and transferring funds for said capital expenditures, and declared an emergency. That's all I got.
Okay, old business. Mr. Stachek.
Always enjoy this part of the meeting. You just read four TIF ordinances that are proposed. And in general, it's part of the concept of what we're doing, however, in these particular four ordinances, uh, there's an issue that I'm concerned with that I had brought up in the committee meeting, and I don't think it's been resolved in the wording of the legislation satisfactorily. And also, we have invited, uh, your fiduciary, your municipal advisor, Andrew Brosart from Bradley Payne, who's here in the audience tonight in the back, and he's filled out a communications form, uh, should you be willing to allow him to answer a question that I have. And that is, on page three, uh, of the ordinances, it says, city council, uh, second, third paragraph down, city council hereby authorizes the mayor, the city auditor where necessary or other appropriate officers of the city to provide information, certifications, execute and deliver or accept delivery of instruments, da-da-da-da-da. It does not seem proper, uh, correct, or prudent for you as a legislative authority of the city to allow that legislation to pass without you retaining final approval of any agreement that's put together of this because of the type of instrument that it is and the impact it will have on the community and what's going on. And I believe it would be unusual for you to do so. And with that, if council so pleases, would like to have Mr. Brosart come up and just comment as to what he sees in other communities with regard to authority and where it lies and who's involved and who should have a say in these things. And that would be my ask.
Make sure the mic's on and introduce yourself and, uh...
There we go. Uh, Andrew Brosart, Bradley Payne Advisors, um, as the auditor has stated, I think it's been less than a year we've been working with you now, but, uh, happy to be here. First off, we don't write those resolutions or the titles, so I know they're very long-winded and get a lot of detail in them, but, uh, happy to answer any questions, roll to the TIF. Um, you know, it's a new, new concept, I think, for the, the city. Um, it's a, it's a, it's an economic development tool that has been used a lot across the state of Ohio, um, and it's gonna be allowed to, for the, the city to recoup costs, uh, or revenue stream for, for costs laid out, for example, in the Sheetz transaction, um, specifically. Uh, it, it is a, a wonderful way to, to capture development revenues for other public purposes or projects that the city may have, uh, that you might be looking forward, uh, to doing. So, um, cities, many municipalities, townships, and counties have used them in different manners. A lot of, um, cities similar to yourself have used them in the downtown region, um, for redevelopment purposes, and so, uh, which is the one, um, TIF that's been, um, put before you. Uh, others out in areas where there's a wide area of land have, have gone out to put these TIF districts in place to capture that revenue stream, um, before the development occurs or in connection with, um, a developer that may be asking for an incentive for whatever reason to help get, get the development moving forward. Um, I think two of them, I believe, or maybe Sheetz specifically, is there to capture revenue to help you, you know, recoup your costs that's been outlaid ahead of time. And over time, after the CRA would expire, you're gonna be able to grab that revenue stream and help pay for your, uh, your public improvements and recoup that cost. Specifically, I mean, in terms of the, the different types of transactions, uh, I think you have four that are different, uh, in terms of TIF districts. Ones where you have a developer that is, uh, before you asking for some sort of incentive. Um, there are development agreements, there are other agreements that are in place that, um, that is negotiated with your, um, administrative team, uh, to, to get those documents in place to make sure that they say what they're gonna do, it happens. Uh, and if not, there's consequences. So, um, it could be design standards within a development agreement, it could be, you know, what they're, what they're saying they're going to put out there in terms of the development. Uh, but also, there's provisions in there to help protect the city. Uh, should you be the one borrowing, or the Port Authority, it might be a borrower as a conduit, it would also be there to, um, to help protect that the payments would get repaid if, if there's a financing that's happens upfront, and they, that's also called a minimum service payment agreement. So, um, happy to answer any questions directly about any of those four, um, specifically.
Mr. Wobser.
Andrew, first off, thanks for coming all the way to Findlay this evening and to be a part of the meeting. The auditor brought up the specific part of the legislation that speaks to who can approve this, approve these contracts, I believe that's what we were talking about. When you look at this, I know you work with a lot of other cities and do, uh, similar type business, how are those contracts structured when it comes to that specific point?
When it comes to development agreements, what you typically have is an arrangement where, um, you know, that's brought to council, and, and the arrangements are pretty much laid out in substantial form. Um, that, that's, you know, and that's where you're giving money to a development directly and, and towards their project. And now, um, other areas, like, for example, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the Sheetz development, is, is, that agreement's pretty much been laid out, and, and there you wouldn't have a development agreement in that case, uh, that would, because the developer or the entity or the company that's going in there is not, um, well, in this case, we're behind, we're kind of behind the ball, right? Because they're starting the project and they're under construction, so that's not a situation where you would have a development agreement in place. It's really, I would probably say something more to the, to the, um, I forget the name of the, the TIF district that you created, one ninety-one and forty-one, ninety-five? Yeah. Something of that nature is where you would have a development agreement with that, that group, uh, that lays out the terms of what you're going to be using the funds for.
Thank you.
Mr. Stachek.
Yeah, and to that, I, I don't want to give the impression that I have a problem with the administration negotiating agreement. My concern is that, uh, on behalf of the taxpayer, um, prudence and that there's proper reviewing, that you, as the representatives of the community, have final authority over whether that offer is a good offer, whether it sets good precedence or not good precedence, uh, and if necessary, input to go back and modify or, or change things that just aren't palatable to the community. However, uh, it's my belief, uh, based on the discussions I have and the way this is worded, that that may or may not happen, and I'm not, again, questioning the integrity or anything of the current administration. I'm saying, as we move forward and as we do these, and these areas, once you create them, are going to be there for a long time, I think it's important that, just a simple line in there that says, you know, ultimately with final approval of city council as the legislative authority to, to keep moving forward, and that's my recommendation as your fiscal officer.
Mayor.
Yeah, so, if, if I'm looking at the correct section, page three, section three, second paragraph, this council hereby authorizes the mayor, city auditor where necessary or other appropriate, can you turn your microphone off?
Nope.
Or, uh, da-da-da. Or other appropriate officer of the city to provide such information certificates and execute and deliver or accept delivery of such instruments are necessary and incidental to collect those service payments and to make such arrangements as are necessary and proper for purpose payment of the service payments. Any late payment shall be subject to penalty and bear interest, yada yada, all the standard language. Um, this is referring to the TIF district itself. The request of the auditor on the meeting with our attorney, uh, the, with, with Bricker Graydon, they stated that was not appropriate language in this section to insert council because this is referring to, you are giving us authorization when you approve this, to sign, oh, any necessary documents, file reports, and collect the service payments. The development agreements are exec, they are entirely separate documents that do not need executed or permit, they will have to come back to you as separate agreements, just as I would have to execute any other agreement. So, that is, I understand, and obviously, I'm gonna have to come back to you for any additional negotiations, but the, that language the auditor just referenced is not appropriate to go here because you are authorizing by passing this legislation, specific to the paperwork related to the TIF, not any separate negotiations or development agreements, which will have to come back to you as separate legislation.
Mr. Wobser.
Andrew, are you in agreement with those comments?
Uh, listen, I'm not an attorney. I, I, you know, that, that would have to go before, uh, your bond counsel. I mean, to the point that there's, there's a separate agreement that states what, what that's deal with, that developer may be or that development, absolutely, I agree with it, that's in a separate document. How that gets moralized or approved i- is really a discussion with Bricker.
And Mayor, then, adding on to that, then, so, there is no way, and again, we're looking at worlds down the road, there's no way for that developer's agreement to be included into this TIF agreement, correct?
This ordinance, if you pass it as is, if a future TIF is established, you can incorporate development agreements specifically. So, part of the discussion with our attorneys, with Andrew, with the auditor and myself, at one point, we were looking at having a separate development agreement for the Sheetz project, but since we have already given them support.
Right.
That was redundant, and they said, you don't need to do that because you're really just creating more legwork for yourself to try to get Sheetz legal to approve something that you, in essence, have already agreed to. But the development agreements would have to be an, a document, an amendment, if you were wanting to pass it at that time as part of a TIF, which can be done or you negotiate ahead of time. But for each of these, there is no negotiated development agreement at this point in time, and anyone that would be negotiated would have to come to you for council approval.
Mr. Hellman.
Thank you. As, um, Mr. Brassett expressed, it's probably best to listen to our legal counsel, and we've got two attorneys in the room that are on our payroll, I'm wondering if either one of them have an opinion. Mr. Rasmussen?
Well, I think I can speak loud enough, but... You're, you're speaking about a, an area of great expertise, and I know that the lawyers that have been consulted by the city, this is what they do and all that they do. This really isn't something that, yeah, your, your law director's office has the ability to give input on. This is a specialized area of practice, and as long as the proper questions are being asked, uh, to these lawyers that are advising the city, um, those are the best answers we're gonna get. That's the best answer I can give you. This is really out of the wheelhouse for our law director's office.
So, did you ask that question, whatever his concern is? What, what did, what did they say?
Well, I don't even know if I was involved in that meeting, but, I mean, those questions can be asked and may have been asked by the mayor, for all I know, I don't know.
Mr. Stachek.
Thank you. Well, I asked the question in the meeting, and what was given is, is with any good attorney, well, you can do it this way or you can do it this way. You can add the extra language here or you could do it in here. However, what concerns me is this says, uh, council hereby authorizes the mayor, and then where necessary, other people, um, to provide such information, certifications, and execute and deliver. Execute and deliver. Alls I'm asking and recommending as your fiscal officer is that this gets further clarified so that that language down the road, execute and deliver, uh, and the verbiage and the manner that it is in here is not misconstrued to allow that to happen so anyone other than you can approve any negotiation with anybody where there will be payments in lieu of taxes or infrastructure put in or anything else, because that is your purve, ultimately, to approve where the money goes, or in this case, uh, where it doesn't go because it wasn't collected or spent. It's, it's a minor request, it's reasonable, and I also, if, if Bricker would step up and say, no, that's absolutely inappropriate, which he didn't do, but if they would say that, then we would abide by that, but this, this needs done, and I think it needs done in a manner that it's transparent, not, not a conversation between two people. We need something and need something in writing if you're gonna, if you're gonna go that way.
Russell. So that we don't have to belabor this point continually, can we, uh, have the auditor's concerns, uh, relate to our, uh, attorneys at Bricker and have them, uh, respond in writing? And then, uh, if they believe that, uh, there's merit to the auditor's concerns, amend the ordinances as necessary?
Yes, I'm happy to work with them to get it in writing, since we already had the conversation. I would also note that they added the city auditor where necessary at the auditor's request, but I would just point out that the full statement is related to the service payment processing, so I will get it in writing from them and pay them more hours.
Ms. Frishy.
Andrew, I just have a question for you. Do you feel that the city should be getting TIF happy? I mean, we're doing four right now, do you feel that this is like a big tool for the toolbox that we should do at every opportunity we have? Because I feel like four on projects that are already started or they're one parcel projects, um, they also impact other areas of, of our community. So, when, do you, but I know you kind of brought it forward to us, I guess that's how I understood it, to start promoting this. So, is it something that you're telling us that we should do this every time, just like we do a CRA and we do a Port Authority?
I, I'm, uh, well, I was kind of shocked that, that it wasn't in place and that you weren't using this tool.
It's been years.
Yeah. So, do I think you should be running out and doing it on every single development that pops up? No. Um, because, to your point, there are, there's somebody losing in this game of a diversion of taxes, right? Uh, it's, it should be done strategically, that when you're looking at projects, for example, the downtown redevelopment, I thought that was a great plan, uh, you know, in terms of getting that in place. Areas out by the, um, the interstate, um, and then also with, uh, Sheetz, when you already outlaid capital for a project that you're gonna recoup it that, that way. So, um, yeah, you know, there's been some communities that have gone out there, and this is, this is going way back thirty years ago, and put residential incentive districts on every single subdivision that came into town. That's not good. Um, so, I think, you know, now, now that, that, you know, there, there's been a lot of discussion and education and, and about this, the fact that you can overlay a CRA with a TIF and use it as a tool for the community, I think, is a great thing, but again, you do want to be selective as to where, where you utilize that.
Yeah, because we don't want everybody to lose, and we don't want to look like we're on a power grab.
That's, I would agree with you a hundred percent.
Thanks.
Okay, last question, let's move on. Mr. Stachek.
Not a question, but more a comment, uh, for Councilman Wobser and, uh, for benefit of Mr. Brosart. Um, both appropriations and strategic planning are important finance committees. Uh, as part of his agreement with us, Mr. Brosart has agreed to come to be here, uh, a minimum of four times a year to assist us with different things. So, I, I would encourage you to consider when you do your capital plan review, maybe first quarter, give us a lot of advance notice, not just a couple of weeks, so that we can schedule him in as part of that end plan, you know, a more detailed look at it, get to get the capital projects to him, to get some of the things that we're doing, so that get the capital projects to them, to get some of the things that we're doing so that as our longer term, even beyond the five-year plan are evolving, we can start to work together and talk about where it will be wise for the city to start to consider debt or debt capacity and where debt is productive. We don't want to issue debt for parking lots. That makes no sense. We want to issue debt for infrastructure that generates revenue and generates good revenue, something much or well beyond some of the things we're seeing with some of the other developments we've seen. So again, he's a fiduciary of the city, he was hired for not only our benefit but yours, and, and I think he's going to be a wonderful resource. So thank you and thanks for your time.
Other old business. Ms. Frishy.
Just one question I didn't ask earlier on the income tax department. We took in a $3 million individual payment, and it sounds as though Income Tax Board recommended that we don't give that back in payment plan, that we give it back in full. Has that happened yet? Are we expecting that on the November statement?
Mayor, or, sorry, Mr. Wobser. Oh, Mayor.
I'll, I'll field that question, it's fine. Whoever, anybody can answer. Income Tax Board reviewed the situation, and on, under the auditor's guidelines, he said that it's best for us to go ahead and pay that, we've got the cash, and it just helps us from a budget situation to go ahead and show that out of our budget now versus a payment.
And you're looking at the appropriation ordinance for that in your packet, and so in addition to that, down the road, I'll do my adjustment ordinance on the income tax I do every year. So this year, you're going to see two significant ordinances with regard to the income tax after you, after you do that as we get to the end.
Other old business. New business. Mr. Stachak.
Just a friendly reminder, we have our cleanup ordinances at your last meetings. Please have a quorum so we don't have to call a special meeting. We're starting to narrow in on some budget numbers that we'll get over to the administration hopefully in the next 12, or excuse me, 24 to 48 hours, and we'll get that all done. So thank you.
Well, under new business, I don't know if anybody noticed that Jim Burnham, who worked in the water department, managed it for a number of years, passed away. His obituary was in, on the internet today. I'd known Jim personally for a long, long time, and he was a good employee for the city of Findlay. Mayor.
Just a couple of quick items, primarily positive ones, which are good. The tree lighting will be the Friday after Thanksgiving at 6:00 PM. Our team is diligently decorating it while the weather is cooperating, so please plan to attend. And in that same vein, our downtown businesses are doing a winter fest program throughout the winter, and this Friday is the Shop Local Friday. So you're doing your Christmas shopping, which I'll remind everybody to be doing that. We're only a couple of weeks away. Try to shop local and support all of the great businesses throughout our community. And then stay safe. Make sure you're continuing, as weather does get bad, to drive wisely.
Did the people that donated the tree, they agreed to let us know who it was? Can you?
It's, it's on the public announcement. I forget the name off the top of my head. My apologies.
Are we going to do a sign that indicates that? Okay, that's always a great donation from our local citizens. Mr. Wobser.
Mr. President, do you want to take a poll, make sure everybody, we're going to have a quorum on the December 17th meeting? Just to...
Sure, I'm not going to be here.
You said you're not...
I will not be here, but anybody else not going to be here? Looks like everybody's going to be here. I will send you a postcard from Florida. Other new business, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Baumann. Second, Mr. Palmer. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. We are adjourned.